We're going to start the meeting at 7:05 and it's being broadcasted by Area 58. And we have four members on the board today. And to vote on it, all four has to be in the affirmative. And it's up to you if you want to continue to meet in, or we could wait for a five-member board. What do you think?
Okay.
All right. All right. First petition is 993. Would you like to read it?
I would not read cheers. Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 10th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the board of select meetings meeting room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Fifth Street Halifax, on the application by Scott Clausen for special permits to build two storage buildings, 1,800 square feet and 1575 square feet from equipment and supplies located at 21 Clement Street Halifax. Said property is owned by Scott Clausen, 21 Clement Street. As shown on assessors map, 66, log 1, book 588, page 108. The applicant is seeking a special permit to build two storage buildings as this project violates the Halifax zoning law by law. 167, 12F, for density regulations for specific use due to the proposed garage building being inaccessible, 884 square feet. Area zone residential, petition 993.
Mr. Clausen, would you like to tell us what you want to do?
Yes. I want to put up two storage buildings located on the property that's a little over 100 acres. Setbacks of just 100 feet on one side and 100 feet on the other side for building number one. We'll call it building number one. And the second building is 45 feet. And then the length is in the hundreds of feet.
Do we got one each?
And it's going to be mainly solely used just for storage and equipment, farm equipment and plants. And we have a lot of potted plants that we use for the events.
Right.
With the time, we've got to bring them inside so they don't get windburned.
You're going to have electricity in these buildings or?
There'll be lights. Yeah, there'll be lights. Yeah.
No facilities?
No facilities, no heat, that sort of thing.
Just for vehicle storage and?
Yes. Yeah. One of them is actually going to be replaced. Once we get these buildings up, we're taking down a 28 by 50 building that's been there for 25 years and is seen its day. And it's too small for us right now. We've all grown that to.
Is that this one? Is that this one right here or this one?
This building's going to come down.
This is going to come down?
Yeah.
That's behind your?
This one here and this one here.
That's behind your residence?
Yes. Yeah.
This one?
Yep, that one. I do have pictures of the two buildings. Building one and building two. Building one is the bigger one, which is going to go here. And this is building two.
None of this is visible from the street, correct?
None.
Do you know the overall building plans?
Is it 12 feet?
That's the door.
It's 14. It doesn't make pitch. It's not much pitch. 14 plus the pitch.
Well under the 40.
Yeah. Yeah. I was going to say it's probably, would you say it was?
Well, one's 14 wall and then whatever the pitch is, but he doesn't have a lot of pitch.
Yeah, it's probably like.
Three inch pitch, so it's probably 60, 80.
That's 100 acres, you said?
106.
So you're well under the law coverage?
Yeah.
Well, we have a letter here from Margaret. Is she here? She's not on the other. Is she here tonight?
Yeah, that's me.
What is your concern?
Thank you. My name is Margaret Chee, Margaret Butter, Lakeview Trust. Well, so I got here tonight prosecuting the plans. I haven't had a chance to see that plan. We've discussed about this, from a general more investigation about it. It is a residential zone bought and there are commercial type uses going on.
It's also agriculture.
Right. I'm aware of the agricultural zoning exemption and just think that it's important for the board to be aware that there's boundaries and limits on that. Seeing this particular project and understanding the uses that they plan to put it to, I don't have any specific, particular concerns, not that I've seen everything. But there are neighbors, there is noise, some shows are going on and there is traffic. So I understand that it's all horse farming, et cetera, but this is a big number of component to it. And I feel like in the town, they are being challenged with a lot of projects that might be seen maybe as agriculture, but also commercial, a commercial component, and just wanted to raise that concern.
So how far apart will be those buildings from your property?
About 800 feet.
From her property?
Edge of her property. Yeah, from her property.
800 feet?
Yeah. And I don't know what percent of 100 acres is covered by other buildings and horse rings and things. You would be, you can explain that?
Percentage wise? So we've got the barn, which is.
Where is the barn?
Let's see, 32 by 50 and then 30 by 90. And then the indoor hall is, that's about 15,000 square feet. And then we've got a few other small buildings, the Porsche office. The other buildings that we have are storage buildings or basically storage buildings for jumps and equipment.
The facility that you use for the arena, riding arena is in the front?
Correct.
And if it enough is in the back that the buildings that you're putting up are 800 feet away from her?
Yes.
And the other ones are way, way at the back, back of the property? It shows here that one is behind your residence that you're going to take down.
Right.
And the other one's way at the end of the property. It's far away from her.
Correct.
Any comments?
I personally don't see a problem with 100 acres. It seems like the buildings probably making up less than an acre. I don't know about.
The building's probably, probably three or four acres.
Three to five.
With all the buildings that are there, that exist in there right now. You're probably talking about four acres altogether, which is.
Which he has 106.
Six acres. So you've got 100 acres though.
That's as buffer as anything else.
I mean, 800 feet away from your residence is really, all you have to be is 30 feet.
Yeah. I know. And it's probably even further.
There's a lot of buffers.
Actual houses that are there, 1,500, 2,000 feet.
Oh, no. I was just saying, you know, the noise level goes down as far as.
Yeah. It's still, it's noisy and like I said, it's more like the nature of commercial operations, like agricultural operations.
It is an agricultural, yeah. It is an agricultural operation.
Well, agriculture can be commercial as well because you have to produce to sell or you have to do something to sell. So it's not for just pleasure.
I understand that. And my point is that sometimes agricultural operations get so big that they're actually commercial. And before coming here, I didn't understand the scope of what's going on. And just wanted to raise that point because, you know, if it's 24/7 commercial operation and access feels don't show part on it, really you're kind of drawing that line.
They're not, they're not an operation 24/7.
Do you operate 24/7?
No, no. I'm just saying, they're not an operation 24/7.
I just wanted the board to be aware. That's all. It's not buttered that.
And we're aware of Mr. Clausen. He's been, you know, he's been in front of the boards plenty of times.
And I know, I'm aware. It's a question.
He's your neighbor.
I'm sorry to be in, whatever, six years or so. As a lifelong resident of Halifax, it's a beautiful property and well maintained. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
What's the pleasure of the board? Anybody?
What?
Would anybody would like to make a motion?
So you need, you need four members all to vote yes.
We have to vote all yes to get it.
To get it.
Either that or you could.
Wait till we have five and then you need four and you can have one no. So it's up to you what to, just so you're aware.
Aware of that. What happens if it gets tonight?
You've got to wait two years.
Oh, three years?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years. Oh, okay. Yeah.
I agree.
I mean, if you want to wait till next month, we can postpone it till next month. All right.
Do you want to do that? You want to vote tonight?
Want to vote tonight.
I mean, I don't see any issues with it. I think property's large enough.
We're trying to show up. It's postponed.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
All of the board members here feel strongly that it's.
Yeah.
I'm speaking for myself. It's far away from everybody. And it's not, it's an agricultural use. You're putting storage building for the use for the horse farm.
Right.
Other than that, I mean, there's not, there's going to be electricity in it. There's not going to be no toilets or anything like that or running water or anything like that.
All right. I'll let you take a vote on it.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for petition 993 as presented.
Second. I second. Second. Yes.
Which is answer.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. A passage for the zero. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. If you see your dad, come on.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to the next applicant, 994. Do you read that, please? Please. Moving right along here tonight.
Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 10th, 2023 at 7:10 in the board of select meetings meeting room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Fifth Street, on the application for Daniel Kennedy for a special permit for dog daycare and dog training facility in a business zone located at 416 Fifth Street. Said property is owned by Halifax Park Plaza, one Weston House Place Suite, A1, sorry, suite. A401 Hyde Park, as shown on assessors map, 72, lot 10, book 52462, page 7. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a dog daycare and training facility in a business zone as this project violates Halifax zoning by law 167-7. Scheduled use regulations require a special permit for business in the zone, area is own business.
Mr. Kennedy, you want to tell us what you want to do?
Yeah. All right. So I want to roll in a, it's a 3,600 square foot space. That will be the new doggy daycare. It's going to be structured. We're going to work on, it's going to be training and daycare at one time. It's going to be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be a short window in the morning for people to drop off their dogs. And then there'll be a window for me to go and pick up other dogs for people who can't bring them themselves. And that process will repeat at the end of the day. There'll be a window for people to pick up their dogs themselves and then we can drop off. There'll be no dogs housed overnight. We have discussed like waste removal because I know that that's always a concern. We want to make sure that it's sanitary and, you know, it's not a mess. So I did discuss that with the health department and the plan that I put forth. They did okay. And so I'm really just looking for a spot to set up. I'm right now, I'm going to hold pack walks. I want to be able to have a rotation of groups. We'll have two separate indoor areas. It's fully indoor and they'll just kind of be in and out. They'll have playtime, they'll have training time, they'll have rest time and just swap back and forth throughout the day.
Do you have a plan with indoor pens, et cetera?
I don't because the landlord, I'm waiting to get a floor plan because I don't know exactly how it's going to be set up until I get approval. He didn't want to get the floor plan from the interior.
So you got approved by the planning board?
Yes.
And how many dogs do you think you'll have at one time?
Maximum of four.
Forty?
Yes.
And none of them are going to be housed overnight at all?
No overnight.
Just not only are they going to be taken outside?
The only way they'll be taken outside is if they go on a band, they go on a trail walk off road.
No, no. Outside, like the recreation area outside for the dog. There's not going to be.
None.
Potty breaks?
They're going to be going to the bathroom inside and we kind of clean it up as we go. There will be like a small station outside of the door. It's like a raised platform with a catch pin. If an owner walks up to the dog, go to the bathroom there, then we clean it up.
No question.
The storage of the waste is outside?
Yes, in a dumpster.
A dumpster specifically for?
For disposal, for waste removal? Yeah, dumpster?
Yeah, just, it's going to be, so each, it'll be bagged individually and then disposed of in different bags. It'll be double bagged and then in the dumpster.
You have your own dumpster there?
Yeah, I will bring my own. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That'll be picked up weekly.
So you had your site plan from the planning board to the whole nine yards from the planning board ready to go?
Yes.
It's all interior, so there is a site plan. It's all interior, so there is no site plan.
They may even get one.
So do you have a site plan?
Yeah, it was submitted.
It was approved by the planning board.
All right then.
Any more questions?
This is in the back of the building?
Yes. It would be the, if you're facing the building, it would be the back right on the Rockland Trust side.
Right in the corner of that building.
And the dumpsters?
There's already a dumpster pad there right on that corner.
How far away is the bank from there?
Probably.
The bank is about 40, 50 feet between the buildings.
Just wondering about the odor from the dumpster.
Well, if they're bagging them, if they're double bagging.
Double bagging. They're sitting out there for a week.
Yeah.
Cover, cover next to it? It will be covered?
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously the landlord probably knows this, but there's, like, there's counseling within that building. How is the landlord having noise? I don't, like, it just seems like a lot of noise for a counseling thing, your neighbor?
What, what counseling is there?
They'll fill out this as a counseling center.
Okay.
Is it going to be soundproofed?
Yeah, there's going to be sound baffling. There's going to be sound of like floor materials. There's going to be like a double gated entry, so there's no noise. Like, there's, there's not going to be any open doors to outside. And, you know, it'll have a baffle in from the ceiling and then the floor. It's an absorb material that will, you know, because it's the rolled rubber flooring and it's probably like an inch thick, so that kind of absorbs the sound that way too as well. And then also, since we're training focused, we don't want to listen to bargaining all day either, even if we have 50 dogs, we'll go insane. So our focus is to make sure it's a calm, but fun, relaxing environment because you can blow trees in terms of if it's too loud. But the big part of the focus of having smaller groups on rotation and then having the breaks in between, so they're not just constantly in a state of just like chaos all day, just running all day, going wild. That's when you have all the extra noise, but it's in a controlled environment. They're allowed to self-relegate and calm down.
Are you doing this somewhere else or have you done this before?
Yeah, I've been doing it in Plington since, well, the daycare park started in 2018. Out of my home, that is, they're at the barn.
Well, you know, you need foreboat in that format to pass it. You could wait until next month or we can vote on it today.
I'd say let's go on the side.
Anybody else want to speak to it?
Anybody here? Go ahead.
How many employees do you have in there?
Five at a time.
Time at a time and how many dogs?
Four.
Now, are you training these dogs for police work or just obedience, for behaving themselves? What's your actual training?
Basic obedience and household manners.
Okay, so you're not doing guard dogs or?
Correct.
Security dogs or any leasing?
Correct. None of that.
Okay, now, while the dogs are housed in there, do they each have their own kennel space or are they in groups?
Yes. So when they are at rest, they will all be resting individually for safety and so they can actually relax. And it'll be two separate areas that when the dogs are out, they'll be playing. So they'll either be in a pen that's supervised by one to two staff members. If there's 20 dogs in each pen, it's going to be one staff member for 10 dogs. So there's a group of 20, there'll be two staff members with them. The rest will be on break and isolated in three areas.
And your entry for bringing the dogs in and taking them back home is in the back of the building?
Correct, yes.
Whereabouts are your employees parked?
There is probably like 20 spots back there or if not more. They did discuss in the plan. There's a lot of parking spots back there.
Okay, so they're not parking out in front?
They're not parking out front. There's.
Other than the traffic coming in, going twice a day?
Correct.
There's plenty of parking spaces lined up in the back of the building.
Back of the building.
Yes.
And is this a seven day a week operation?
Daycare is Monday through Friday. The only thing on Saturday and Sunday would be training. There would be, you know, maybe an hour or two at a time.
Do you need inspections for this, like yearly or?
The kennel inspections. If they don't handle, yeah.
That's through the state?
Over the town?
Just the local, local annual control.
So when you're up and running, they have to sign off before?
So you take any dogs?
And how all this, how it all works?
I'm not entirely sure. Obviously I have to get the kennel license, but I have to get the approval for zoning for the kennel license first. So, yeah, I would need.
So you get a kennel license from the state or is it from the town?
No, from the town. So I need to get the kennel license before I get offered it.
So there's animal control sign off on it before you get the license or?
They do yearly inspections. I don't think there's any, I don't think they do. They might, they may or may not do a initial inspection, I'm not entirely sure. Every town kind of is a little different. I know in Plington, they, they didn't do one immediately. It was probably a few months down the line.
So you said you will have 40 individual section for them to rest? Each of them has their own place to rest?
There's not going to be 40 spaces because it's a small spot.
Okay.
But there will be space or, because some dogs will be out. We're never going to have all 40 down.
All dogs together, okay.
So we have a minimum 20, 20 spots. So if one full group was out, we could even break that group. So it's 10 dogs on one side, 10 dogs the other play area, and then 20 at last.
So you're not going to have 40 dogs?
By the ones.
That's why, that's why I was saying stuff. So your capacity is four?
Yeah, the capacity is four.
All right.
But you're not going to start off with 40. Probably you're 15 or 20 at one.
Yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd really like to see a plan as far as where the dogs are and how much space because we've had this before kenneling, where we had to see specific plans to see how much space each dog had. Like, it's, we've had problems in town before with kennels. I wouldn't ever down that road again.
No.
And so that's why I'd like to see some sort of plan, see where these dogs are going to be inside. And I know that the landlords hesitate, but they should be able to give you a floor.
Can you surprise us with a plan of what the?
I mean, I could draw up a plan and it just wouldn't be to absolute specs because the landlord determines the actual amount as possible. Like, I was told 3,600 square feet. For all I know, it could be 37. You know what I mean? So.
Well, they're charging for square foot, so you just get.
So you need to have it, yes?
Well, you know, well, we've already signed, there's already a lease for an agreed upon model. And so it's 3,600 plus or minus.
Well, if you, if you get, let's say, do around 3,600 square feet and just divide it into how you're going to, how you're going to, how is it going to be run?
Yeah.
The way it is and we can hold on it next month. That will be the best thing for us to look at and to make an accurate decision on what's going to be in there. And let's say each dog's got, what, three, four square feet, five square feet?
I think it's 10 for our bylaws.
Huh?
I think it's 10 for our bylaws.
10, like 10 square foot?
I think that's what our bylaws say.
And whatever it is, if you read the bylaws and go by that and give us a sketch of what you're going to do and you're allowed 3,600 square feet and we'll log it from there.
All right.
And that way you'll have our member board and you can vote on it.
Okay.
All right?
All right, sounds good.
So we'll continue this till, we want to make a motion to continue till next month?
I'll make a motion to continue petition 994 till next month, August 14.
Any, she seconded?
Yes.
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 And myself, yes. So you next, next month.
All right. Thank you, Grandma.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Your back? That's your back?
No, that was there before, no.
That's it? That's the lady?
Probably the woman that was sitting there.
I don't think anybody's here. Petition 992.
Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June.
July. It says June.
It does say June. Why is this because we extended it?
That was continued.
Continued.
Sorry. Board of select meetings meeting at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Fifth Street Halifax, on the application of usually what you tell for a special permit for an in-law apartment located at 657 and 659 A1, Calvert Street Halifax, map 0233. Said property is owned by Bella Realty Trust of 655, Calvert Street Halifax. As shown on assessors map, 19, lot 866, book 646, page 67. The applicant is seeking a special permit for an in-law apartment as this project violates Halifax zoning by law 967-7, date 12, scheduled use like regulation, area zone, residential, commercial, petition 992.
I don't see if anybody here for that. Maybe we should continue it till next month? You made a motion to continue till next month?
We have 90 days on today.
I motion to continue this till August 14.
They filed, they filed in April.
They came last month and they said they're going to revise the plan.
Yeah, maybe they have consent.
But we need an extension, right? 90 days?
Yeah.
So we need an extension.
Nobody here for it, so. Well, might as well.
So.
It's over. Should send a column or write a note for them?
Secretary here?
Uh huh.
Secretary here. There's 90 days, right? And without a continuance, what if we can't get in touch with them that way?
Well, we don't, we don't want to put ourselves in a hole either.
Was it April what?
April 10.
You don't already owe?
And without a continuance, what if we can't get in touch with them that way?
Well, we don't, we don't wanna put ourselves in a hole either.
Was it April what?
Uh, April tenth.
You don't already know?
No.
July tenth, so two days.
Ninety days.
It's today.
How many days? Not thirty-one days?
So what do we do?
It was up yesterday, really.
Oh. You agree.
Nine days from the date.
You have a number for them?
Huh?
Do we have a number for them? No.
I don't, so...
We're just, why we're just...
What do you do? Vote? If it's no, it's two years?
No, we can't vote unless, unless they're here.
Is this the one?
Yeah. On Walnut Street.
Walnut, I thought it was on Monticent.
They have a number.
Come on, come on, pause it.
Well, he knew that he needed an extension and he was getting this up, or I think the other one.
Yeah.
That's Monticent Street.
Yeah, that's what this one is. We have the minutes?
You should have the secretary contact.
So that, is that the number? Signature applicant, six thirty-one, nine-eight-eight, is that the number? No?
No.
There's nothing in the minutes about an extension.
So I must be confusing.
We have a number here.
Yeah, the number's here.
Do you have a phone number?
Six-three-one.
Try calling?
Nine-eight-eight.
It's not allowed you have to call.
So then, what do we do? Well, do we...
We can't give an extension unless they, they need to sign it.
Yep. Well, do we have, what else do we have tonight? Maybe back burner it for right now?
Yeah, put it, the one we table till the end. We'll, we'll continue to be in until the end and see what happens. We'll, we'll take the, the next app, the next one.
So this is just a discussion?
Yeah, just a discussion. Halifax Mobile Home Estate. Would you like to talk to you, what you wanna, tell us what you wanna do?
Sure. I'm Sheila Carroll, I'm the president of the association, and with Frank Parable as vice president, Paul Stip as secretary.
How you doing?
Good, how you doing today? Good heavens, tonight. I had work done, just so I hit on all the points. Just give you a little bit of background, the residence bought the park six years ago, it's privately owned. We bought it for twenty-seven million dollars, and to defray some of the expenses and to try to keep the rents down, the board of directors started up a volunteer sales team. The volunteer sales team, anything that can sell, all commissions one-hundred percent will be up into that general fund, which, you know, one month helps a lot of money. Which is, you know, very ungood. Halifax Sales Team's a nonprofit with volunteers, they sell for the benefit of the park, and there is that, the commission's gone to the general fund. There's another group for them called the Park Sales Group. He's also been in the asylum since day one, since the new motion to hold on. He is a privately held for-profit company. He's got his own website, and on the website, he included on him that he invites you to visit us at our information center at twenty-three Forster Drive, Halifax, Mass. That's his own private residence, so it don't raise his business out of there, which, you know, you know, turn blind eyes to that, you know? But the information center, I think, is a different scope because, you know, traffic or... So that's basically, we just wanna know if this is allowed under the zoning laws within the town.
You have, if you have, or running business out of your house, and I know this personally because I run a business out of my home, you have to file with the town.
Yeah, I don't even know, you know...
And there's a list of them on here.
Okay.
So we can look and see if he's in the law there.
All right, does he, is he required to file with the town?
Yeah.
It's every single year. I mean, I know, yeah, you know.
Every single year, I get the notice that you have to re-up it and have...
And pay the tax.
You have to let them know how much money is, your expenditures are, what's new, what's not new, anything like that, because if you're filing that, you're taxes, to be able to deduct it, it has to be filed with the town.
Okay.
As far as the zoning, can he call himself? It's just one person that believes that that's okay, because it's, you're only using a certain percentage.
What are you trying to sell? What are they trying to...
He's selling real estate.
Real estate?
No.
He's, he's selling in the park as well. The only difference is, I was, with the seals, the Halifax Sales Teams profit goes to the association. He's selling his own profit, which, you know, we don't have a problem with yet, it's just, uh, just making sure that he is following the rules as he should be, as far as...
They have to get a business certificate through the town? You have to, you have to go through the, go through the Selakman and...
All they do is fill out a piece of paper. What they send to me every single year, saying, are you still in business? Have you spent money on your product? You know, what are your expenditures? And that also falls into taxes, because if I'm spending money on a printer or something, it, it all goes together. But I have to spell out how much of my home I'm using, and if there's visitors or not, which in my particular case, there's no visitors, but it appears that he's advertising...
And you're gonna have a sign out there too?
Well, he has signs in front of the service, he's got like little, I don't call them kiosks, but he puts his, his, there's signage rules in Halifax too.
Yeah, they, they're gonna, they're gonna have to go through the...
Yes, well, but then it has the sign range, yeah. Did he give a permit for the sign?
Go to the clerk's office and ask them what you need.
Right.
Then you're gonna, then you can come back and file a permit and come back to us.
And that would stop the signage?
Well, the signage, you gotta go to the planning board, right? Planning board to sign, but you gotta go to the clerk's office, find out that you need a business certificate to operate within the park, then, uh, then you, they'll tell you what to do anyway, so...
But which, he does not do it within the park, he, he did it in his house, right?
Yeah, but it's...
His house is in the park?
The park is owned by the people.
He's the business director. Okay. All right, now it's gonna tell you about every single business sort of, all right. So, there is a way that you're supposed to do it.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have the ability on your phone to see if it's registered?
What is this?
What is the name?
Halifax Sales Group. Halifax Sales Group. Just gonna ask you if you just...
Fox, sounds good, okay.
Yes?
Nope.
Is that this one?
You gotta go through the channels, go through the clerk's office and they'll tell you what, what you need to do for a business certificate, then you go through the planning board for signage, and then you come back in front of the zoning board.
Okay. Thank you. It was all set?
Endless.
Okay. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I know, enough excitement for one day. That's a fiasco, tell you right now.
I'm sure.
Because the gentleman they're talking about, who is a gentleman, I bought my unit from fifteen years ago, he's been doing this in the park, and he donates money to generations from his sales, okay? He doesn't have a sign out there that says I'm a real estate agent, okay? But he's been doing this, and the woman who is the secretary or the clerk for the park has been doing his closings, and all of this is recorded at the county dates, so everything is above board. What this is, is the new, since we bought the park, they have created a group of volunteers that is, quote, their sales force. Where is their signage, okay? Where is their permit? I'll tell you right now, this is just a fiasco, okay?
They want all the sales, to, to go back, yeah, I, I get that.
And that's not gonna happen as soon as the free animals come. I will be back for the next meeting.
See you then.
See you later.
So, the gentleman that came in for the boarding was shut down in Plumpton.
He was shut down?
He was shut down in Plumpton. I will find that information.
No, I, we didn't know that. Well, why was he...
I did.
Why was he shut down?
For abusing the dogs.
Abusing the dogs?
No way.
So, I will find that information and bring that to the next meeting.
Okay.
But trying to find a place for me to board my dogs when I go on vacation, I've been looking around, went to different places, and that was one of the things, don't use him, he's been shut down, he's looking for a new location, so I kinda had that chip on my shoulder already when he came in, 'cause I was just like, 'cause people that hurt animals, I have no tolerance for.
I had, I had a pet bull for twenty years, twenty years, I couldn't even...
Bull?
A bull, I couldn't even kill him.
Well, Justin's got all the animals and John won't let, she's like, no, let's keep them, and he's like, he's like, the cow keeps getting out.
You know, many people bring me chickens every day.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that where you get your chicken?
Yeah.
Your, uh, Dells or...
Dobbs.
Dobbs chicken?
Donations of the masses. So, let me find that out, but I didn't wanna like get confrontational.
No, you, you can't, we can't get confrontational.
Right, but at the same time...
The facts are the facts, and the longer he was shut down...
Also, the town shut him down, right? Well, that's public knowledge, so...
Right, so I'm gonna find where that is, like, it was hearsay the way I heard it, but...
Yeah.
I wanna find it actually, and I also do think he needs to make sure he has enough space for these dogs, 'cause I know you're over on the other side, but can you imagine running, you know, what is the name of the place? Got food going out and you've got this dumpster stinking up to join, you've got a church in there, you've got a counseling facility, I can't believe that the owner is okay with this.
I agree. He just wants, he just wants to fill up his building.
He wants that?
And I get it.
I don't, I don't, I personally, forty dogs in a, in a thirty-six hundred square foot...
Too small.
Too small.
Right, and that's what...
You said, you said you need, you need ten, ten square feet, but...
I think that's what it was, remember when we had that one come by that wanted to be over on Old Farm Road, and she was gonna be breeding, I think it was golden retrievers? And she had like ten square feet for his dog, we went, it was nauseating how long we spent on it.
I know, I, I went there, we were, we were, and we went to Bobby Hunt, I mean, she had ninety-six dogs.
Yeah, so I think I'll look at both of those things before our next meeting, you want space you need and...
The plot record.
But that's why I was like, 'cause I don't want someone abusing dogs in this town, sorry.
So what do we do about this guy? We can't continue with this.
We can't?
No.
But we have to vote on it because that's our only other choice, and if we, if we don't do anything with it, he gets like a construction, instructive permit?
Yeah.
And it's automatically allowed?
Do we vote to extend it?
He has to agree.
He has to ask for it and agree.
Want to call him?
Not really, but I will.
Want to call him?
Where's the number?
Six-three-one.
Six-three-one, what the heck is that from, Michigan? Is this Mr. Patel?
He said it wasn't a screen, yeah? He forgot to put it on his thing.
This is the one I told you, my friend's...
Six-three, this is six-three-one-nine-eight-eight-six-oh-one-five?
Yeah, what's his name? Is it Mr. Patel? Sure.
Don't, yeah, just saying who you are.
Is this Mr. Patel? This is Tina Kenyon who is zoning for. The Halifax zoning board? Hi, um, we're having a meeting this evening that you're supposed to be at. It is tonight?
Ah.
Nope, we're on the, we're on Monday nights. Uh, next would have to be the fourteenth of August, but the problem is, is in order to extend it, we need you to be here to extend it. Yes. Is that, if that's at all possible, we can, for instance, go shh. All four, all four of us are here, we're getting ready to adjourn the meeting and we're just waiting on you.
Ten minutes?
Yeah, he's in the sense, okay, we'll be here. Thank you.
Did I give him the number?
Mm-hmm. He goes, oh, I thought it was last night.
Last night?
That's, that was something.
You know what, after the Fourth of July, I think everything gets screwed up, so who knows?
So he's on his way?
Oh, yeah.
So we have a form, okay.
Yeah. We have a form.
One? One? Yeah. One?
Oh, sorry. Who is this one?
You have a sign here too?
Seven-eleven?
Yes, seven-eleven.
No, we're not signed here. Okay.
I don't know.
I think it's seven-ten.
Department head.
I'll be able to sign. There's Peter, Peter needs to sign.
Is he, is he from Halifax?
Who's this guy?
The guy that's coming though?
Little handsome.
Said he's a handsome man.
Well, the guy from nineteen Lake Street withdrew the application without prejudice. James Rodriguez.
He wore threats today?
Who signed this? Is that, that's not you, right?
No, that's...
Okay, we got another one under there buried?
Ah, okay.
We would've been in trouble if he just voted against that petition.
Minutes?
He's looking at that card thing, mine's not allowed for some reason.
So you know about this guy, Ken, I did, huh?
Huh?
You know about him?
I've not heard good things. And I, I just, when I hadn't heard good things, I was like, oh, I feel like every time you hear about boarding, you have to be careful. Didn't we have like a huge problem years ago?
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of waste coming out of the forty of dogs.
I know.
I have to walk around every day and pick up several piles.
I had one dog already, mom's.
I know, I buy forty pounds of food every two weeks, so it's pretty close to forty pounds every two weeks.
That's, I'm just sitting there for a week, that's...
It's gonna be nasty.
Unless they pick it up.
There goes your flowers.
Huh?
There goes your flowers. It's not roses anymore.
They rot the flowers. Maybe that's what they were, they put you at one end, him on the other, he's downwind, it's perfect. At least you're not downwind.
A lot of waste coming out of the forty of dogs.
I know.
I have to walk around every day and pick up several piles.
I had one dog already, mom's.
I know I buy forty pounds of food every two weeks, so it's pretty close to forty pounds every two weeks.
That's, I'm just sitting there for a week, that's...
It's gonna be a big mistake.
Unless they pick it up.
There goes your flowers.
Huh?
There goes your flowers.
Okay.
It's not, it's in the yard.
They rock the flowers.
Maybe that's what they were...
Maybe, they might be.
They put you at one end, him on the other, he's downwind. It's perfect. At least you're not downwind.
Fertilizers, what you...
It helps the smell.
Yeah.
Smells like roses down there.
I gotta find that information.
Anybody read the minutes?
Nope. I guess they're business secretary.
Who tagged us?
Chris?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't seen any email.
I know, I do. I guess she's... I guess she's doing both.
Six, twelve, two thousand.
And Andy and us?
Yeah, but they hired somebody?
I'm sure they did. Well, I know Caroline's doing it part-time too.
Well, we can do the minutes next month if you're... Any better than...
There isn't...
There's only one.
I wanna look quickly.
Six, twelve, two thousand, twenty-three?
Oh, that's April.
How stable?
April is there too.
I didn't even see April, I'm May. Didn't get past the first one.
It really, um, reeked up the James Rodriguez one.
He won't come back.
Uh?
No, he won't come back.
She said he won't...
He probably put a patch on a patch. I don't know if he lives there or not. He doesn't live in the lot?
I don't think so.
No. I mean, he's...
But his, his, the two properties he has...
Yeah.
Somebody lives in the other one.
Why don't they, they're nice to each other. Why don't they just combine them and just build a nice house? You know?
Cause then they'll only have one lot.
Yeah, I mean, they're on the side house anyways, so...
House trade?
Huh?
Okay, house trade house? It's an awkward... I'm like...
I know, Debbie mentioned something to Bobby about it. Which you wanted to do it. It's, of course, I love, but it's not as intense. Are these clubs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, those clubs. Club soccer, club softball. If I come from this one, do anything.
You glad girls didn't want to do softball this summer?
I didn't.
You play basketball? Hasn't been handled before, yeah? Basketball.
It sounds... Basketball is not my jam. Kind of don't like the pleasure. But is that religion?
Yep.
Yeah.
Love his team.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm sure you miss these days.
Huh?
You miss these days.
I know.
Being everywhere, every time. Just sit down and relax.
Baseball, football and all that stuff. And my boy played football and basketball. I go see him all the time, huh? No, I don't see him at all.
Funny how it works. We see her when she needs a clean uniform.
Huh?
We see my daughter when she needs a clean uniform. I hear us lobbing down the stairs. "Where's my clothes?" Thirteen's fabulous.
Oh, yeah.
The best.
Oh! I think I'm the only one in my house that moves with the laundry man.
How many kids you got?
Just two. One of each. That's good for me.
Oh, yeah?
Can't be outnumbered.
Yeah, I'm outnumbered.
Are you?
Yeah, two, one.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I got, I got three girls.
Yeah?
They're all gone though, I don't see them anymore. I haven't ever seen them.
Mine live at home and I don't see them.
That's a good thing.
We hit that age.
That's a good thing, they're in their room all the time.
Or I'm just annoying, no matter what I say.
Yeah.
Wait, wait until when they need something really bad. "Mom, please, Mom." "Can you do this for me, Mom?"
Yeah.
But they forgot what they did yesterday. And my kid, I gave him a, I gave him a Jeep. His three sisters drove it.
Mm-hmm.
And I gave it to him. And he beat that up so I took it down the farm. Blew four tires right off. I don't know how anybody can blow four tires right off. He goes, "I need tires." I said, "Gotta work for it." "You were born dead." I said, "No, you gotta work for it." I said, "Go to, uh..." I said, "Enhance, enhance the tire."
Yeah.
I said, "Go ask him what he wants for four tires." I'm charging three hundred bucks. That was a while ago.
Yeah, that's not...
Oh, wow.
Four tires.
And he got, he got two used for the back and two new for the back. Five hundred, three hundred bucks. He goes, "I don't have any money." I said...
Well, that's out.
Every morning, come to work.
I have a lot more things to be done, buddy.
I said, "You come with, come with me to the market three times a week and in a month's time, you'll, you'll earn that three hundred bucks." Hey, one thing, once he put those tires on, his house was clean. Never, never took it down, down the farm ever again.
I remember going to a party in the woods, I was down the birchers. I backed over a stump and tore my front feather off. So we put it in the back and I drove home and I'm like, I don't know what happened.
You don't know what happened?
Such a teenager thing, I'm like, I don't know.
And I lived on the side of the road.
It just fell off, Dad.
Just came out, just like that.
You know, there's been no kids. Same for ours.
And now, when I, they did think we're stupid, you know?
Like my son, he just turned sixteen in June and then he got a job at the YMCA to be a camp counselor.
That's fun.
So, he went for the interview, la, 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 nicely. And then they call him to make him the offer and they offer him the job. So they told him that he'll be responsible for fifteen, um, elementary, elementary school.
Oh.
Age. And he, he came to me and said, "Mommy, I'm just a kid myself. I don't trust myself to go and work with fifteen other kids. I don't think I'm gonna get that."
I'm gonna tell you, when I went on the...
He didn't take the job!
When I went on the field trip with my daughter in seventh grade, they gave me fifteen kids to watch at Fennel Park. I wasn't ready for it.
He called, he called, he called, uh, Louie and said, "Um, I think thank you for the offer, but I think I'm gonna get another offer from somewhere else." There's no somewhere else.
That's a lot of kids to watch.
Yeah. I said, "No, I'm a kid. A kid cannot be supervised by fifteen other kids." I just turned sixteen.
Preach kid.
I said, "Hey." My husband said, "He's right. Just tell me you're a kid."
And he knew. It's better than he knows, lets him go to a bad job and gets in trouble.
I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Oh, well, last..." He wanted to go buy something to eat. And I said, "I mean, can you give me twenty bucks?" And I said, "Well, you are a kid. You cannot work." Well, that's what happened. No job, no money.
Turn that call this dude.
It's funny.
He's got thirteen minutes. I expect to see somebody screeching in any second.
Last night, huh?
Our games are in nothing tomorrow.
So I thought it was last night, did he show up here? It would've been better sound if it was tomorrow. It's funny, it continues here.
Yeah.
And we can't go too far from here if you live in Halifax. Only two square miles.
And that's the key. So the bear was in my front yard yesterday. Right, we have all these blueberry bushes. And I'm talking to him, he's like, "Bear, bear, bear, bear." Right? So he's got a picture of him as he was like walking down into the woods. And Amber Doherty, do you know the Dohertys? They live behind me. So I'm like, I text Amber, I'm like, "Get, get the animals or the feed in, like, I don't know. Just be careful, cause she's got so many different animals." But that's all the way over on this side of town. Now they're seeing it over on Oak Street today. So he's moving pretty quick.
Wow.
Yeah, they cover a lot of ground.
Brian just had to...
Where you, you live on, Mount Shiloh, right?
Yeah.
Did they fix that road yet?
Nope.
They said, "The bear looking for something they're waiting for."
So they sent him back to the planning board. And the planning board claims that there's nothing that they can do. So...
Isn't it the town's responsibility? How long, how long you even live there?
Seventeen years.
There's, there's a bond, right?
Yeah, it's a land bond.
So, you gotta...
And now they're dumping.
There he is, two wheels, you're right. He's up on two wheels. He's here.
So, last...
Look, your house is the last house on the left, right? I'd, I'd love to move to your house.
Yeah.
And just to go, I wouldn't, didn't wanna go there with my truck.
Well, hearing all this commotion about pasture, I'm like, I gotta check out the tour, turn out. Oh, yeah, now I see what's...
Mm-hmm. Imagine the bus coming down, it, those kids are bouncing.
Yeah.
So, there's a land bond, but the town can't take the land and sell it?
Nope.
They can't do it?
It's established.
They can't do it by eminent domain?
Nope, cause he's, he's... But the problem is, is that a couple of years...
So the road doesn't have to be finished until that last lot is developed, is that what it is?
They won't give a building permit when he finishes the work.
Is that what the, is that how they do the deals?
Yeah. So we started to finish it and actually made it worse. And then they wouldn't give him a permit anyway, cause they got like more...
Sold as well?
It's been sold for two years.
I'm sorry. Ah, we gotta start charging you like that? So stupid, yeah, I just...
The summertime, the days get all mixed up.
Yeah, the dates come on my mind, like July twelve. And just, as it is.
Well, you, you need to tell us that you wanna extend it till next month.
Well...
Unless you have your plans.
We have it, but I just wrote today, but I was putting in a paper about, uh... This is the entrance, this is the in-laws, and this is the main house.
It has to be certified.
Certified, yeah. That's all, that's all I said, like, I'm not gonna say anything.
So we can continue until next month?
But we needed you here in person to continue it, unfortunately.
So we can, we can sign.
So we can say, you know, petition to continue this until next month, if that's okay with you?
Yeah, that's okay with you.
Second?
Then, when you, when you come back next month, make sure it's, you have a certified plot plan so we can vote on it. Without a certified plot plan, we cannot do any of that.
Okay, no problem.
And that's August fourteenth.
August fourteenth. I'm gonna put it in my calendar. I'm gonna put it in my calendar.
Alright, so...
So second?
Anyone make a motion?
Oh, she did.
Oh, she made a motion, you seconded it?